Good morning, everyone. How are you? Thank you, everybody, for coming out. It's super early. I am Dr. Kelly Martinez Semrad. I am Orange County Commissioner for District Five. Thank you for joining us today for a press conference on defending your dollars. I'm joined today by fellow local leaders and community advocates, people who, like me, are deeply concerned about what's happening in our ability to serve the people of Orange County. We are here because the state of Florida is making it increasingly difficult for local governments to do their jobs. Today, I'm addressing four clear examples where state overreach is interfering with how we protect our tax dollars, your safety, and our future. This morning, the Florida Agency on Fiscal Oversight, FAFO, aka Florida Doge, is on-site auditing Orange County's spending. But let us be clear, because we support financial oversight, we support accountability, we support transparency. But what we do not support is political theater disguised as fiscal concern. The state claims we've added 300-plus million dollars in spending. What the state fails to recognize is that in the last five years, we have nearly 81,000 people that have moved to Orange County. That growth requires investment in law enforcement, fire rescue, corrections officers, and public services. But what's under audit today? Not bloated contracts, not inefficiencies. FAFO is targeting multicultural programs, environmental protection, homelessness initiatives, traffic calming projects to keep our neighborhoods safe, and more. Ask yourself, is that fiscal responsibility or political retribution? I want to speak about something very personal to me and very personal to all of the people who are standing behind me. Never in my life did I think, in the United States of America, that I would be told, "You can vote yes, you can vote no, you can abstain, but if you don't vote the way I tell you, I will remove you from office." Let me be honest with the people. Today, when I vote, the fellow commissioners and Orange County Mayor Dummies, we are voting under duress. The board has been threatened to be removed. The state is pressuring every commissioner and mayor to vote in favor of amending 287-G agreement, a change that would force Orange County corrections officers to transport ICE detainees, nearly 500 miles round trip to alligator Elcatras. If we vote no, the Attorney General says we are not putting our best effort forward to implement a federal immigration program, and thus, we are declaring Orange County a sanctuary county. Let me be very clear. Sanctuary counties and cities are illegal in the state of Florida. Orange County has never violated immigration enforcement of law. This threat is political coercion, plain and simple. The numbers don't lie, you guys. Every ICE detainee costs Orange County taxpayers $57 per person, per day. Orange County taxpayers have spent millions and millions of dollars that we have not yet been reimbursed for. Our jail is 25% understaffed. Our officers are working mandatory overtime, and now we should expect them to drive hundreds of miles across the state to transport ICE detainees. So I ask the question, is my best effort as a county commissioner to protect our public safety from jail breaks and to stand up for our corrections officers' safety, as well as for fiscal responsibility of our taxpayer dollars? Or is my best effort to enforce a federal immigration program that puts both of these at risk? I'll pivot to another topic, Senate Bill 180 and Vision 2050. Senate Bill 180 was passed this summer. It was written so vaguely that developers can now override the decisions of your local government and veto your 2024 votes for sustainable growth, for things like the rural boundary, for protection of our parks. If developers don't like a land use policy, right now, they just declare it more burdensome and more restrictive, which is the language used in Senate Bill 180. But the law never defines what is more burdensome, what is more restrictive, and the bill's own sponsor cannot define it yet either. The state is working on the definitions with a report that is due December 1st of 2025. But for developers, what is more burdensome and restrictive? Stormwater protection to prevent flooding of our homes, affordable housing initiatives to help provide much-needed affordable housing, raising impact fees so that we don't have to raise taxes on citizens. Even Orange County's voter-mandated rural boundary with 73% of our votes is considered more burdensome and restrictive. The state rejected Vision 2050, a comprehensive land use plan that cost all of us $4.5 million of your tax money and our staff's long hours and effort for years. The plan was built to advocate for smart, sustainable growth, for community-driven growth that puts people first. I'll pivot to another topic, Visit Orlando's Audit, a broken system that has misused millions. Last week, the Visit Orlando Audit revealed what we feared. Millions of taxpayer dollars were misused, $75,000 dinners, Skybox tickets, personal car payments, designer office and decor, refrigerators. Visit Orlando receives more than $100 million in public funds, and I want to be clear, we expect those funds to be used for tourism promotion, and they, Visit Orlando, has its place, but its place is not $100 million. Let's zoom out and really look at the real issue here. It's the tourist development tax model is broken. It's over a half a century old, and it's written for a different time. It favors special interests while blocking local leaders from using that money to improve our quality of life, from using that money to improve the tourist experiences in our destination, investing in things like transit, safety, infrastructure, bicycles, bicycle safety, public services. We host 75 million tourists a year. They use our roads, they drink our water, they call for our police, they call for fire. Yet, the state will not allow us to legally use that revenue to maintain the systems that tourists rely on for their safety when they visit us. It's not just an outdated model, you guys, it's absurd. What is further absurd is to propose raising our sales tax to cover the cost of transit and infrastructure when we could use the tax revenue from 75 million non-residents to help fix our transit challenges. Again, we must defend our dollars. In a final word, let's connect the dots. A political audit, a coercive vote, a veto of local land use planning, and a tourism tax system we aren't allowed to fix. These are not isolated incidents. They are a pattern, a pattern of control, a pattern of punishment, a pattern of silencing local government, and a pattern of misusing public dollars. Let me be absolutely clear, I did not take an oath to serve political agendas. I took an oath to serve the people of Orange County, to protect our safety, to defend our dollars, and to fight for our future, and that is what I will continue to do. We're not here today to stir conflict, we're here to draw a line. This is our community, these are our tax dollars, this is our future to shape, not theirs to control. We're not here to pick a fight, we're here to protect what is ours and to stand up and defend our tax dollars. Thank you so much for joining me today. I'm going to pass the mic to my fellow commissioner, District One, Nicole Wilson. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Semrad. I am incredibly grateful to have you as a colleague on this compassionate board. I want to reframe where we are today in context of what we went through last week. We received not one, not two, but three absurd letters from non-elected bureaucrats, appointees, people who are paid more than just about everybody on my floor up there, to come in and scrutinize who you hired for your local leadership, who you hired to do things like protect our environment, to make sure that our, the people that live here are cared for, to make sure that when they call 911, someone shows up there. That's what we do in local government. But what the state wants us to do is to create some distraction so you don't notice how corrupt they are. They are, they are blowing hundreds of millions of dollars to do some kind of performance for the nation of how loyal they are to the administration in Washington, DC. And this is on your dollars. This is, this is going to pull your resources from our corrections facility, potentially it will have a trickle-down effect to other public safety investments. And I think it's so important for you to understand, one of the things that makes local government so great is your engagement. I look at the people here today, these are our neighbors, these are our friends, these are the people that put us in office. I answer to you, I don't answer to them. I said an oath to you. The idea of being threatened, that we are being threatened, now, this is, this is an agreement, they call it an agreement still, and now there's an addendum to an agreement, and they're still calling it an agreement. But if we don't sign it, if we don't endorse it, what happens? We're removed from office. And then some other appointed bureaucrat gets put right in that spot. I can only speak for myself, but I am going to continue to stay the course on being a compassionate leader in Orange County and being a responsible leader in Orange County. Those things can be done simultaneously. We can be compassionate and efficient. And let me just tell you something, we will not bend. I understand that what happened last week looked like whiplash, that Orange County decided we were going to make sure that we were keeping our resources here at home, and then all of a sudden, we heard about the mayor being forced to sign this agreement. But make sure that you focus on that word, forced, under duress, under extreme duress. Now, listen, you don't have to be a contract attorney to know that under extreme duress does not make a valid contract. And so today, we have an opportunity to discuss what that means, and hopefully, do the best we can to protect Orange County citizens, visitors, people who have come to bring and build a better life here, and our staff, which is 8,000 strong across Orange County. We're not forgetting about you. Our corrections staff, we value what they do every day, and they are not here to run errands for the federal government and for the state. And if our Doge efforts show that maybe we're paying our corrections personnel or our firefighters too much, let's bring that to the people and see how they feel about it. Let's, let's go to the people and see how they feel about us defunding the police and defunding public safety, because that's what Doge is asking us to do. That's where the majority of your pennies go, here in Orange County. Without further ado, I'm going to introduce Representative Anna Eskamani, who is here in solidarity with us today about this discussion.
Can we just take a moment to say how lucky we are to have these two amazing women as commissioners? And of course, to all our commissioners and our, and our mayor, and our mayor, this is a moment to truly stand up and defend our dollars and to defend our communities. My name is Dr. Anna Vieskamani, and I'm so proud to serve District 42 in the Florida State Legislature. And I have a message for Governor Ron DeSantis, go Doge yourself. And I don't mean that to be cheeky, I mean that to be efficient. There are so many opportunities for Governor Ron DeSantis to look in the mirror and hold himself accountable. The Hope Florida controversy. Where did the $10 million go, Governor and Attorney General Uffrey Meyer? How about spending more than half a billion dollars on building an immigration camp in the middle of the Everglades, hiding contracts from the public, no due process for those who are detained, and lying to us the entire time as this process unfolds? And, and by the way, I will be in federal court tomorrow as a witness, defending the Friends of the Everglades to close down this detention camp. Now, I will be brief, because I know we have many speakers, and we also have a mini to get to, but I want to emphasize a few quick points to, to first of all, affirm the reality that here in Orange County, our commissioners are incredibly responsible with our dollars, to the point where there are not enough dollars to be invested in the things that we need, which is why many of us have pushed for reform on the tourist and development tax. That's why many of us are, are continuously pushing to change the status quo of how we currently have restricted dollars, because we know where the need is, and yet, we don't have the money to invest in it, like transportation and so forth. When you look at the Orange County budget, the reality is, our biggest expenses are police and fire. And, and our correctional officers in particular are already substantially understaffed, overworked. Mandatory overtime is the norm at our county jail, and so now, the assertion that our county staff has to do the job of the federal government, I don't think so. And the federal government isn't even following basic humanitarian laws or guidance. We've seen this vigilante-style immigration enforcement where they are dragging people out of courtrooms, raiding places of work, and I have visited the jail, I've spoken to the detainees who are there on ice holes, none of them have any criminal background. These are farm workers, construction workers, roofers, plumbers, these are folks who are cleaning your hotel rooms, they're making our community work. And now, we're expected under duress to pursue an anti-immigrant agenda that not only scares people and divides our community, but does not make us more safe. Because law enforcement should be focused on going after actual violent criminals, not hard-working immigrants, not the parents, not the parents of some of our Hope youth that are here today. These are families that have called such a Florida home and have committed to supporting this great community. Now, Senate Bill 180, another example of state interpretation boiling Orange County away from defending our dollars. It's so important to remember that even the bill sponsors of this legislation did not expect for there to be this type of backlash from the state of Florida, that was never their intention, and we have to ensure that we hold the line on this point and every point. And then finally, I just want to emphasize an opportunity for Orange County, and that is to file a lawsuit. We need to fight back. A small city of 12,000 people called South Miami has already filed a lawsuit against Governor Ron DeSantis demanding that a court decide for the implementation of this terminology of best effort. This is a small little city in, in South Florida that has said, "We're not going to bend the knee, we are not going to lick those boots, we are going to sue and get clarity." Orange County should absolutely join that lawsuit. And so, thank you, thank you to our commissioners for defending our dollars this morning, thank you for defending our county every day, and thank you for helping to defend our people. Thank you, everyone. And then, I think up next... No hate, no fear, immigrants are welcome here. All right, everyone, join me in welcoming Representative Rita Harris.
Thank you, Representative Eskamani. Good morning, everybody. Thank you so much for organizing this. I don't know about most of y'all, but I am so tired, I am so sick and tired. I look at all the resources behind me, I look at all the resources around me, and I think to myself, wow, we could really put all of this brain power and all of this energy to solving the issues that so many Floridians are facing, like the rising cost of housing, like property insurance, but instead, once again, we have to fight back against political theater from a governor who is desperately, desperately, desperately trying to remain relevant in his lame duck era. And I want to be clear, not only did this detention center cost half a billion dollars, a detention center that, like Representative Dr. Eskamani said, is housing people who are not violent criminals, who are not meant to be locked up, it should be part of our community, we also, before the regular session started, passed a bill that put an additional half a billion dollars towards immigration efforts that should be handled by the federal government. So we are subsidizing the federal government every single day, we are taking Florida's tax dollars and putting it to the federal government for them to do their job, and I think that we've had enough. We've had enough, we are done with it. We want these dollars to focus on our communities. We do not want our dollars to go to cruelty, we don't want our dollars to lock up innocent people, we want our dollars to help Floridians, we want our dollars to help Floridians stay safe, to afford housing, to get their basic needs met. And we don't want our elected officials being told what to do by somebody who, and I think it was eloquently said, someone who should Doge themselves. Because there is still a big question about where the Hope Florida dollars went, and how they were funneled, and how taxpayer money, it would be if I took my, I took my IDA account that I get as an elected official, that's supposed to go towards paying for my office, that's supposed to go towards serving the people of Florida, and I decided to put it for a campaign. It's illegal, it is highly illegal. But of course, they're not going to look at that, they're going to look at what the counties who push back against them do. There is no question why they're going after Orange County. There is no question, because Orange County didn't vote for Governor DeSantis. So this is retribution for not following him, for pushing back, for demanding better of our citizens, and we are going to stand up, we are going to be clear, we are going to be loud, we're not going to back down, and I'm standing with my commission here to do the right thing, because I know, I know how much they care about their constituents, and I know how hard they fight for them. Thank you.
Eric Ray, Director, sorry, Executive Director, Christian Services, thank you.
Thank you, Representative Harris, and thank you, Commissioner Wilson, thank you, Representative Eskamani, and most importantly, thank Commissioner Semrad for organizing this. It's a very important gathering this morning. The sunshine is out, and we're here to, to set some sun on some of the truth that's really going on here in the area. Every day, my team works here to lift people out of poverty and homelessness just down the street at the Christian Service Center for the Homeless, and we do it with dignity, we do it with compassion, but most importantly, we do it with strategies that are proven to work. Lately, we find ourselves not just fighting homelessness, we're fighting bad policy, we're fighting bad ideology, we're fighting bad actors, frankly, we're fighting dangerous actors, and chief among them is an organization that some of you may not have heard of called the Cicero Institute. This Texas-based think tank is driving legislation that would criminalize homelessness, and they've done so already, they wrote the legislation that pushed the public camping ban here in Florida last year, that just got pushed back by the state of North Carolina, and other states of the country are fighting back. This is a nationwide effort by some bad actors to put together bad policy. They're trying to put together a blueprint. The Cicero Institute's blueprint is a blueprint of failure, one that needs to, it currently treats homelessness as a nuisance to be erased, something we don't want to have to see, not a tragedy that we have to address. Right now, the Cicero Institute's policies paint adults and children experiencing homelessness as mentally ill addicts that are choosing to be a vagrant as part of their lifestyle choices, and this is crazy, because there's no science to support this, none whatsoever. The playbook mirrors the same authoritarian thinking that we see with Project 2025, developed by another think tank called the Heritage Foundation. This seeks to centralize power, suppress dissent, and dismantle the systems of care and accountability that define local government. We know it works, permanent housing, mental health care outreach, prevention, but instead of supporting these efforts, the state is tying our hands, from blocking the use of tourist development tax dollars for affordable housing, to squashing eight years of hard work to put together the country's first county-wide form-based zoning plan in Orange County's Vision 2050 Plan, a plan that would have been among the most effective things of the state to promote affordable housing and thus reduce homelessness. So now, they're threatening audits and unfunded mandates. So Tallahassee is clearly sending a message to us. We don't trust local communities to lead. Tallahassee doesn't trust local communities to lead. Well, I trust our community, I trust the people behind me, I trust the people inside the county administration here, I trust the people who show up every day to care for the most vulnerable, and I trust local leaders to make decisions based on data and not dogma. I don't think our governor and attorney general have thought this through, because if they can send out an audit to discover waste, fraud, and abuse at the county and municipal level, then it should be our opportunity to do the same thing to Tallahassee. And I'm demanding, I'm demanding the same right now, as a citizen, as a taxpayer, as a native Floridian, as someone whose ancestors helped found this state, that we need accountability in Tallahassee. We need an audit to discover waste, fraud, and abuse specifically of the executive branch in Tallahassee. Thank you. Now, I'd like to welcome Giancarlo from Sunrise, Florida.
Good morning, Orange County. My name is Giancarlo Rodriguez, I'm with Sunrise Movement Orlando, a youth-led climate organization fighting for climate justice and a more affordable Orlando. I'm feeling super energized this morning to be with so many community members, to ask our county commission to fight for us and represent the people of Orange County by fighting against the state of Florida's overreach, whether it be fighting for our immigrant community or fighting to defend our dollars through policies like the rural boundary, it's more crucial than ever that the Orange County Commission represent the people. As a child of immigrants, my mom from Ecuador and dad from Dominican Republic, I know how crucial immigrants are to our community. My immigrant parents sacrificed and gave me the opportunity they have today, and our immigrant community that works every day and sacrifices for all of us has made Orlando and Orange County the incredible place it is today. The people of Orange County have made its position clear. We demand that the Orange County Commission protect immigrant families. We demand that Orange County commissioners fight for policies that bring affordability, like Vision 2050 and the rural boundary. And we demand that Orange County stands up against the state of Florida's overreach and not be afraid to make a lawsuit. Because fighting for your community doesn't mean being afraid, it means being brave, it means standing with your community even when you think it's hard. Sunrise Orlando has been advocating for local county policies like Vision 2050 and the rural boundary to give relief to our current affordability crisis and build more sustainably. Today, in Orange County, a majority of renters spend more than 30% of their total income on housing costs alone. The rural boundary and Vision 2050 help build more affordable housing and help protect rural and natural land that protect our community from stronger flooding and hurricanes that are happening due to the climate crisis. The people of Orange County democratically voted for a rural boundary. The Orange County Board of Commissioners voted for Vision 2050 to pass. It's more important than ever for our county commission to fight for us, let's do it together. Thank you. And I want to pass the mic to Seven with Seeds of Pine Hills.
Morning, y'all. I'm going to be brief, because I don't talk a lot, anyway. Yeah, my name is Seven Charleston, born and raised in Pine Hills, Florida. I am a former teacher, mentor, and organizer in Pine Hills, and I'm the Executive Director of the Seeds of Pine Hills, most people call it Las Amias. Well, it's called Las Amias, most people call it the Seeds of Pine Hills. And yeah, everything that I want to say has already been said, I think, for the most part, I just want to advocate for the residents of Pine Hills. You know, a lot of people don't know what's happening, they're not sure if they're safe or not, you know, if they can go to school or not, if they can go to work or not, if they can go to grocery store or not, and even, even green card holders and asylum seekers who are here illegally, who are here illegally, don't know what to do. You know, they're mobilized, and they're not sure, they're not sure if anything's safe. And I think, right now, we need the, we need the confidence and the courage from our elected officials so that, so that folks know that, you know, there are people standing with them, and this assault on our community is an assault on everybody and not just them. So yeah, I'm just here to represent them and also all the amenities and great things that we take advantage of in Pine Hills, like the government buildings and whatnot, that we've been utilizing for all these different years for our youth and our elders. We want to make sure that it's known that those things are valued, the people in our community are valued, and that we stand with our community. Now, I'm going to pass it to... Now, I'm going to pass it to...
Sonia Stevens.
Sonia Stevens.
For the next speaker, we've got a meeting that we have to get to, so we've got to keep short, sweet, and impactful.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Sonia Stevenson. I am a community advocate, standing up to protect our democracy. We stand in unwavering support of Mayor Jimmy Demings and the Commissioners, who have worked and served our community with integrity, commitment, and a clear vision for a better future. We recognize that Mayor Demings and the Board are facing challenges that may threaten their jobs. While we believe in due process and transparency, we also believe in fairness, context, and undeniable record of leadership that has been demonstrated. At a time when elected officials are disproportionately scrutinized, community trust is essential. We must stand firmly against efforts that are unjust, politically motivated, or disproportionately applied. We urge the community to stand and support Mayor Demings and the Board, and continue to stay informed, demand accountability, not just from individuals, but from the systems that govern us all. Solidarity is not silence, it is an act of courage. We stand with Mayor Jerry Demings and the entire Board of Commissioners. Hold the line, all of the elected officials.
Hello, everybody. I am Felipe Sosa Lazabalé, and I am an immigrant rights advocate here in Orange County. Good morning, everyone. We are here today to stand for democracy and to stand against threats, fear, and silence. Let me be clear: The Attorney General's threat to remove duly-elected officials are not about transportation, ICE, or fiscal responsibility, they're about intimidation, they're about stripping away local power, and they're about silencing communities like ours. This is deeply personal to me. I was undocumented for 15 years of my life, but I also know exactly how families are feeling right now. But this fear goes way back to the '60s for me, during the dictatorship in Brazil. My uncle was tortured because he dared to speak up against the right-wing regime. He believed in freedom, he believed in democracy, and he prayed a brutal price for it. It started just like this: Local officials feeling like they couldn't vote their conscience, feeling like they couldn't protect their constituents or advocate for what's best for the people they represent. This is how democracy ends. It creeps in, not all at once, but step by step, with silence and fear. That's why we're asking the Orange County Mayor and Commissioners to be brave, file a lawsuit, ask the courts for clarification. This is not about ICE and transportation, it's about people, real human beings, families, children, and the values we claim to stand for. And here is my personal commitment and promise: If you stand with us, we will stand with you. We will have your back. We will show up, because this is about all of us and about the kind of future we want and we deserve in Orange County and Florida. Thank you so much. Let's go in there, and let's have democracy be heard.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. Thank you for covering. Thank you. Well done. We have a lot of work to do, and we are fighting to defend your dollars and for our local democracy. Thank you, everybody.
All right, y'all, if you have any signs that we're handing to you, I'm going to go ahead and take those. Thank you.